I want to welcome you all to the Fayette County School Corporation Board of School Trustees Business Meeting being held here at the Administration Building. It is Tuesday, June 13th, 2017, 6:30 PM. And I believe we are going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Do we have any special guests performing at this place? Okay. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think to begin, we're gonna, I'm gonna direct this to Dr. Baer who gets to introduce our 2016-2017 Bus Rider of the Year, Dr. Baer.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs, Mr. Collins, and members of the board. It's my pleasure this evening to recognize a Bus Rider of the Year Award. This is something that Jane Oakley had started a few years back, and recognizing a student has done an outstanding job of following the bus rules, positive attitude, good citizenship, outstanding leadership, and setting a good example for the rest of the students on the bus. And it's my pleasure this evening to present this award to Wyatt Allen. Wyatt is going to be a sophomore at Connersville High School. He's joined by his parents, Mr. Baker's stepdad and mom, and also his sister, I think, going to help too, and I too, believe. And I'd ask Mr. Collins to come forward as well. And as bus drivers, Mr. Steve Russell, I'd ask Mr. Russell to come up along with Katrina Falk, our new Transportation Director. Mr. Russell, you nominated Wyatt for this award, and I'd like maybe to say a word or two about when I ask nominations from the drivers, you didn't hesitate one bit and mention Wyatt's name. Could you talk a little bit about Wyatt's behavior on the bus and how he's such a good example for everybody?
I've been a special needs driver for Fayette County for about 28 years, and Wyatt's rode my bus for, since he was real little. I'm not sure how many years I've been.
Since kindergarten.
Kindergarten. And he's always been a great student. If on a special needs bus, sometimes your different, each student's ride different days, so the route changes a little bit every day a lot of times, and he always recognizes when I'm going someplace different, or anything like that. And he changes, he knows right away. And he's always been helpful and just a great student all around. That's why I nominated him, and then you can think about it.
Awesome.
We're real pleased with Wyatt. He's a fan of music, he's a fan of Cinderella movies, and I got a whole earful when I rode the bus route. That's why I got to know him really well. He's taught me all kinds of things, and we're reminiscing about some things.
Wait a minute, I didn't tell you that.
You didn't tell me that? I remember you took it out now. But Wyatt, the truth. This is a Bus Rider of the Year Award, Wyatt Allen, 2016-2017, with your name on it, Fayette County School Corporation. I'm so proud of you for the job you've done and the example you set on the bus, so congratulations.
Thanks.
You are welcome. And I have, Mr. Collins also wants to speak to you.
If you're with your name on it, congratulations for being our Bus Rider of the Year.
Great.
Good job.
Would you like to say anything?
Want to say something?
You can say something.
Anyway, the other day my grandma had an arm surgery.
I know that.
Grandma is the root of his world.
Very important, very important. So, very good.
Thank you.
Did you want to give a picture? I'd like to get, I think, yeah, Mom's stepdad, everybody in here, Katrina, the bus driver, and I'll let you guys all go ahead and get in there. Mrs. Young, if you could get everybody in there.
Can you get everybody in?
Yeah, buddy, you can come on my side if you like.
Hold it like this. There you go.
All right, everybody look up this way towards Mrs. Young. Everybody look up this way. Hey Wyatt?
Wyatt?
Wyatt, can you look over here a minute?
Can you look at that Wyatt? We're taking a picture.
Ah, boy, good job.
Picture. Smile.
Got it.
Okay, great. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Collins.
It's always great to start off a meeting with something as good as that. I agree with that. Okay, next, we're going to have Trish Fields and I believe Anna Dunkener is also here for the presentation of the grants from the Fayette County Education Fund, the Fayette County Foundation, and also recognition for Virginia Vaughn.
Well, good evening. It's my pleasure to be here with you tonight, and especially to be here with Anna. We're here to present checks to teachers who receive grants with the Education Fund, and Anna will talk a little bit more about that in just a minute, but I did want to let you know that we're presenting checks to teachers, just over $4,000 going to teachers for next year. And since the fund's inception in 2005, we've allocated over $52,000 to teachers. So, it's a great partnership with the foundation, and we appreciate Anna, your leadership and your partnership, so thank you.
It is a great partnership. We appreciate all the gifts that come to the education endowment. They come through memorial gifts or celebration of life of different teachers and different people in the community. It is great to be in the presence of a bus driver that has special help on the bus every day telling them which direction to go. Those are the great things, that he's not just getting it at home, he's getting help on the bus too. So, those are the things that we want these grants to go and help, encourage, and motivate teachers. We know that on average they are spending more than $800 of their own money to better their classroom. And when they go to conferences, and then when they get the magazines and literature, they can see all the other things that teachers are doing, and they take pride in what their classroom, their community as a whole are doing. And with this little bit of seed money, they're able to accomplish things, teach better, have better tools, and we all know that they have challenging times in their classroom, and we don't feel like all of that burden needs to be on them. So, we appreciate the parents and the community and the school board all being there, support staff for them too. So, tonight, I'm very proud of these teachers that took time out of their summer off to come and be awarded these grants tonight, and we appreciate them taking the time because there is money available. And to think that it wasn't that long ago that the endowment was only at $50,000, and now they've exceeded in grants coming back into the community. So, that's a blessing.
So, teachers, if you'll please come up when we call your name and receive your checks. Becky Hockersmith and Sherri Fegley have received $800 for a Healthy Food Choices Project. Jessica Hufford and Alicia Bennett received $500 for a Robotics Club. Julie Myers and Mallory Wagner received a grant for $300 for Life Cycle of the Planet. Angela Shue received $1,076 for renovated and enclosed playground area. So, you have to work it out for her. Lyndsey Brooks received $787.85 for Pocket Lab Digital Sensors. And Ben Fodrea received $699.99 for Project Drone at the Career Center. Thank you, guys. So, thank you again, Anna, and thank you, teachers. And I have more good news. Tonight, I appreciate you giving me a few minutes to recognize a special retired teacher here in Fayette County. Virginia Vaughn was a teacher here in Fayette County for 45 years. She retired in 2011 and has since been volunteering her time at Fayette Central Elementary. But that's actually not why I went to acknowledge her tonight. She's also spent the last two years working on a curriculum project. Back in 1986, the Department of Education required that school corporations teach third grade students about the standards, or teach third grade students about the county that they live in. And so, at that time, we had a group of teachers, and Virginia was part of that group, write this curriculum. The research that went into this, the, you know, gathering pictures and the documents and the interviews, it just is kind of mind boggling. So, Virginia did realize though that it needed a bit of revising, and so she took that upon herself, retyped the whole document, reformatted it, came up with new pictures and digital resources, and it was just a huge project to take on. So, I just, Virginia, the planner is just a token of our appreciation for you, and I think we'd all just like to thank you for your work. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and then we're gonna move on to Ms. Kellum Tallis. We've got some recognition regarding Chart Wells.
Thank you, Mrs. Jacobs. At this point, I really want to turn it over to Rachel O'Brien, our Food Service Director through Chart Wells. She can then introduce her cast of characters that she's brought in this meeting.
Everybody has their own part.
Yeah, everyone has their own special part. Yeah, they're going to, you know, provide an annual update. They frequently do this at the time of their renewal after the school year's over. They've taken on a lot of challenges this year. They have some goals for next year, so I'll let Rachel and her team.
Please do. Well, I've met most everyone, but I'm Rachel O'Brien, like Janie said, Food Service Director. I have Tara McCreary behind me. She is a dietitian for us. She's actually with Crawfordsville and Beach Grove, but she does have ties to Fayette County, so she graduated from there. And then Paul Kendall, he is my, our district manager, so he's my boss. So, they're gonna be helping me out a little bit. We're gonna do different pieces. Obviously Tara specializes in the nutritional part, that's her specialty, so a lot of the nutritional pieces she's gonna take. So, I did give everyone a binder, and I kind of put things in here that I couldn't necessarily fit at all into the PowerPoint, but it's just little tidbits of information for you guys to look at. And our first slide is our menu committee. So, Ms. Kirschner was actually on that committee with me, and we had parents, we had some students, we had staff members. Dr. Baer was on it with us at the beginning of the year, and then Janie was on it with us towards the end of the year. So, we had just a little bit of different representation from different schools and different ages. In your binder, we kind of, these are the surveys, the love food surveys we would give out at each meeting and encourage the students and staff to fill those out. We would also go over our menus, so that was one thing that we talked about, asking the kids, asking staff, is there something you guys would like to see on the menu? Can we do it? That was another thing, can we actually do that on the menu with the guidelines? And this St. Gabriel's menu, even though we do not have an employee at St. Gabriel's to see what was the food there. And Ainsley, she was one of my girls that was on it, she's first grade, I think, first or second grade, third, and she would do this menu for us each time. So, she would rate it, and you can see her scale down at the bottom. And I asked her why it's always a one on Friday, horrible lunch, because it's pizza. So, she doesn't like pizza. And I did find out through this menu committee, a lot of the kids do not like pizza on Fridays anymore. So, that's something for next year that we have to look into, maybe trying it a different day, something like that. So, we learned a lot on the menu committee this year, I think. We also have the, I put the breakfast and lunch standards, so these are the state standards that we have to follow, and we review this in the menu committee meetings also. So, it helps explain a lot of what, why we do what we do. So, that's why we have these standards. And then on the back of that is Understanding the Lunch Line of Parents Guide. So, we did hand these out at Open House last year at the elementaries, and we will also hand these out again this year. We tried to reach out to a lot of parents last year through Open House or Registration, one or the other, so. Cooking demonstration is something else we did. We had this twice this year, and this is part of our Wellness Committee Grant. It was something that Dr. Baer, we actually started with Dr. Baer, and we do it twice a year. This year, we had Chef Nick from Shelbyville come down. We did healthy snacks, and this is open to any staff member that wants to come in and basically learn how to cook a little bit healthier, and we always had fun. I think they were fun too, the demonstrations. So, you gotta sample it, and you gotta watch it. The healthy dinner, the pistachio crusted salmon was excellent, so that was probably our best one yet. But we started doing this last year, and it's, every time, we have probably 25 to 30 people come, so different staff members. Food Rescue, so that is another thing that we have, and we started it last year, and we've added a few more this year. We added Maplewood on this year with the implementation of Universal Breakfast. So, we actually partnered with Mr. Hunt, his church for Maplewood. So, it's been a very positive program, Food Rescue. So, the food that we have left over from Universal, items that cannot be, if the kids did not want an apple, or they did not want a milk, then by the state law, we can now donate this back to local food pantries, caring agencies in our community. So, you can kind of see the high school. We've partnered with a couple different people, Salvation Army, Grace United Methodist Church, the Senior Center is middle school, Higher Praise is Eastview, Everton's Community Sharing, Grandview is Calvary Baptist, Maplewood is Mount Zion, and then Fayette Central and Phrazie will be partnered up for the beginning of the school year. So, we are looking for caring agencies for those two schools also. So, then all of our schools will have an outlet to give these extra food items to, and it goes right back into the community. So, we've donated 63,612 food items this year to the local food pantry, so.
Besides apples and milk, is there something else that gets?
So, string cheese, yogurt, and Mr. Hunt may be able to.
Yeah, muffins.
Oh, okay.
Cereal bars.
Yeah, cereal bars.
Cereal bars, muffins, string cheese, fresh fruit.
We have juice.
Juice, yes.
Uh huh.
Bread juice, cherry juice.
Yeah. So, anything that the kids, if they take a whole breakfast, and they always have their fruit with it, their milk, and then we usually have a grain and then a protein. So, if they take that bag, whatever they don't want goes back into a separate bag, and then we take that back into the cafeteria, and then we usually store it in the milk coolers. What we do with the milk, before it goes to these caring agencies, we do give it to the kids at lunch if they want an extra milk, so they don't have to worry about paying for that milk. So, a lot of our kids don't have money to pay for extra milk. So, it goes to the kids first, the milk does, and that's it, so.
Okay. Great. The shelf stable ones, do you want to talk about these?
Yeah, and we can go ahead and kind of tie that in with this Universal Breakfast Guidelines in the back of your binder. It kind of ties in with this because we are gonna implement this for this year with all of our buildings, so we have do's and don'ts. There's always a lot of confusion in our buildings about what the students can keep and what they cannot keep. So, anytime we start Universal Breakfast, I go in and I do a training either with all the students and teachers or by classroom, and they can keep some shelf-stable items in the classroom if they want a snack later, if the teachers let them have a snack. If not, those items need to come back to the cafeteria for programs like this, like Food Rescue. So, the hot food can never be kept, so obviously that's not shelf-stable. So, we are gonna go into this, the do's and don'ts this year specifically with each building, and this will be hung up so everyone is clear on what they can and they cannot do with the Universal Breakfast food. As I said, Universal Breakfast, yes.
How's this gonna work at the high school, particularly with the charting, and since they, this is kind of a grab-and-go situation, is that gonna be kind of outside the, I can see it working when you have a classroom, the high school kids are grabbing their lunch, grabbing their Universal Breakfast in the hallway as they're scurrying onto class.
And with the, with the high school, it's different in the aspect. We do not do hot breakfast items with the grab-and-go. We do it in the cafeteria in the morning, but we don't do it with the grab-and-go, so there's not a risk of those kids sticking something in their backpack that they're gonna take home that night, and it's gonna be spoiled and they're gonna consume it. So, that's the difference in, you know, the elementary, middle, and high school. So, we do have Universal Breakfast program in all of our buildings as of right now. So, high school, middle school, and every elementary has free breakfast program. Our breakfast this year was increased by 52,299 from last year. So, we served 52,000 more meals, breakfast, this year. Included in that 52,000, we served 32,304 more at the high school with Second Chance Breakfast. So, that was a big chunk of the 52,000. The other 20,000 is probably Maplewood and Grandview because they both came on this year. So, but the high school Second Chance Breakfast, breakfast has gone over really well. We even had a celebration this year for hitting the 400 mark, so we had cookies and juice for the kids, it was free. So, the kids really liked the Second Chance Breakfast. They come after first bell, get a free breakfast, and they can take it back and eat it. So, it's worked out really well for the high school students. I hear a lot of positive feedback from the kids on that. We did receive some grants this year. So, every year, the state opens up equipment grants for us, so we did receive an equipment grant for Phrazie. We purchased a reach-in refrigerator and a hot holding unit to keep the hot food hot at lunch to serve off of. And Grandview and the high school, I did Action for Healthier Kids, so we were awarded $5,000 per building to start our Universal Breakfast program. So, it kind of shows you, we purchased a refrigerator, again, because storage is always an issue, and we purchased bags, and then the high school, we purchased carts, two laptops, and some pen pads for our new program. So, that was money that we didn't have to spend out of our Food Service Fund. And I'm gonna let Paul take over here with the remodel, because he was a part of the remodel, so.
So, appreciate the opportunity to be here. So, I also want to tie in with what Rachel said in Second Chance Breakfast. I want, that is something I'm so passionate about, because high school kids, a lot of times, didn't get a chance to take advantage of that, and I have high school kids myself, so that's near and dear to my heart, and we're always running out the door or onto the next half. So, when we came up with the program here, I have to tell you, this was a test pilot for us as Chart Wells. This model that we've developed here, we're spreading across the country. It's been that successful. Not only are we partnering other schools in the Indiana market with it, but I get the chance to share that with my peers throughout the country, and, you know, on new sales calls and different things of that nature that I'm involved in, and this word is spreading. The things that we've been able to develop here, pilot here, work out the bugs here, is making a huge impact, and we appreciate that partnership and the ability to try new things, and sometimes, you know, you fail, but you fail fast and you try something different. So, it's been a great partnership for us, along with this remodel. I think that what a great challenge this was for us and the team this year, and, you know, timeline was really tight, and that pushed it a little bit, but phenomenal project in the end. So, we started, we had an old dish room that we had, and we had moved and relocated this room a few years back in an efficiency thing. So, the dish machine needed replaced, we put a new one in, and that was definite cost savings and labor savings, but we had an existing space that was pretty much unused besides storage. So, we focused in, this was previous picture of the space, and if you see it after, because we made that a grab-and-go and a quick service area where we do grilled items and pizza items. So, those are typically areas that, and items that are heavily used. So, by separating those folks out of the existing line, we increased our throughput, so kids could get through faster. But we also created a great retail environment where the kids, rather, no matter what your status was, everyone could participate in here, but it had a different feel. Didn't feel like the high school cafeteria, and that's always a big goal, is our students, you know, go to Chipotle, go to Starbucks, and all these other environments every day, and we want to be able to start to recreate some of those things, so they feel that they're in a different place just besides school. And another additional picture about that, I think this project, and this part of the project turned out phenomenally well. We also did a refresh in the high school as well, in the main servery, and so we did some paint and some graphics in there, and also with moving the pizza and the grill into the new area, it allowed us to kind of remap, is what we call it. Where the station was where, allow for throughput and the lines to be easier, more accessibility to fresh fruits and vegetables. We had multiple lines of the extra, extra bars instead of one line. So, it was a great overall project, and I think the students really benefited from that. Some goals that we're gonna have for 2017, 2018, we're gonna do a refresh of the middle school, and starting to work on that now, so ability to do a few things differently, we're excited about that, and get to come back again next year and tell you about all the great things and how that turned out. Adding some new serving lines to Phrazie and Grandview, again, opportunity to address some needs, right? So, some equipment that's outdated and needs replaced, we're taking advantage of that. We also gonna make some changes in our point-of-sale system. So, our point-of-sale system where all the kids ring out, we've done some adjustments in there and be able to track exactly what each student's getting, so if they come through with our food court concept, if they get something off the Sono line or the pizza line, we'll be able to know how many of those things we're selling, be able to allow us to do some more analytics, to be able to drive efficiencies, but also to be able to drive, what are the favorites? When are we seeing the highest rate of participation, and when are we seeing the loaders? And then compare that to the menu. Great resources like Tara, who would help us, you know, change those menus up and drive. At the end of the day, it's about feeding more kids, and so we'll use that data to our advantage. We're gonna focus on Nutrislice usage, which Tara talked about. I think that's a great tool, and we want to continue to utilize it, because, you know, technology is so readily available now, we should take advantage of that. And then Rachel talked about the continued expansion of Food Rescue in those other two schools. So, we're really excited about what's happening next year, and I'm sure there's gonna be 10 other things that we don't have on this list that we're gonna challenge ourselves to do as well. So, Ms. Tara gets to tell us about Nutrislice.
Thanks. Hello, everyone. So, I get to tell you all about this wonderful app that we have, and I see that you all have like an iPad, Chromebook kind of thing. So, if you haven't been on to this website, it is that website right there in the blue, the hyperlink. So, if you want to follow along with me, I would definitely encourage you to do that, but you would type that in into your Chromebook. There is also a app called Nutrislice, and it's like a watermelon, but this is what it looks like, and right now, we are looking at breakfast, high school. Okay, awesome. So, what you, this is what the website would look like. So, if you were to go on to like Chrome or whatever, we're on internet, and type in that address that was in the hyperlink there, this is what it would look like. It looks more like an app version if you pull it up on your phone, just, it looks different, just letting you all know that. So, what is so great about this app is that it can tell you allergy information as well as the specific nutritionals of each item on our menu. So, you can get that with a click of a button, and honestly, by simply, yep, by clicking on one item, you get that information really quickly. So, you can see from the cereal right here, we have Cocoa Puffs. It tells us how many calories, if there's saturated fat in there, there shouldn't be, but it'll tell you that, the sodium as well adds all the carbs in that same item. And it gives you even the, you know, the vitamins and minerals as well. It's very detailed information, and it's per serving, and you can see that serving size up there. One thing to note on the website version is that the allergy is located at the top, and you see this, yep, you have to click on that, and you want to click on the top, yeah.
I think sometimes you have to go under Firefox.
Yeah, and these are all the allergens that would be there. These are the top eight, the, you know, the ones that there would be, and you would click on the allergen that you don't want. So, let's say I have a kiddo that has a wheat allergen, and you notice as soon as she clicked it, all of the ones with a wheat allergen in them are gone, okay? They're struck through. That's what it looks like on the website, but if you have the app, when you, you know how we click on the specific item itself, it'll have the allergen listed in there. So, that, just a little bit formatting, it's a little bit different. So, like right here, underneath that picture that would be there, there's, it'll say like wheat or soy, and I have a cute little picture there, so makes you all happy inside. So, pictures, we love them. So, that's kind of what that looks like, and it's pretty simple to use, and that's how Nutrislice is used. I know for, when I talk to nurses, I tell them to use this because card counting is key, right, for diabetics, and so they use this to calculate card counts at schools. So, yeah, this is Nutrislice. Does anyone have any other questions about nutritionals, like with these breakfast items in particular? We had this pulled up there.
And the app is free, right? So, any parent, student, you know, anyone can get the Nutrislice app on a phone, so Android or Apple device. If the student has a one-to-one device as well, or they can use that, they can use a hyperlink on their, on their computer, so it's readily available to them. And this is, again, getting the information out there so students can make decisions before they get to cafeteria, and also their parents can be able to help them make decisions ahead of time. So, we post, usually. So we post usually a month's menu ahead of time. So it's out there always for the students and their resource. So we want to continue to focus in on that. We think it's a great tool, and just continue to help us expand our information that we're getting available to the community.
Kind of going off just what Paul stated about having the parents, you know, we all like to have that cute little calendar, and the parents like to circle which one you're going to eat at that, you know, that week. You can print off from that website, parents can do that. So I know, I've had parents ask me, like, am I allowed to print off this menu? You can. It's on the top right, you can print it. And, you know, you could already filter for the allergen if your kiddo has an allergen. So just all those things, it's all, it's all there for you, and it's free, so it provides you all those resources.
It breaks down by school, so, you know. So, you know, every district has their own website. So we have twenty partnerships in Indiana. So everyone has their specific webpage, and then it goes and lists every school in there. So it's very easy for everyone to be able to get and see what's in the high school or what's in the middle school. And sometimes the offerings are different in elementary school, and so you have a lot of the information out there for everyone.
So did you say this is already available, Dan?
It is, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I can show you the app. It's easier to see it from, like, the picture.
It's also on our website. If you go out there to food service, then you can click on the menus as well and see it from there. Tara, can you share, like, I think that people get a misconception when they see blueberry muffin. Or they see Pop-Tart out there. That, it's a huge no-no, and how are we able to serve that?
I just make everyone a sample. So out here in this cooler, you can take a sample of our breakfast items home. I just wanted you guys to be able to see, like, the nutritionals on the back. And these are things that we actually serve, so if you just, I forget if I might pass it around. Go ahead, Tara, with what you're saying.
No, you're fine. Um, I don't, these aren't page numbers. But if you turn it into your little booklet that Rachel put wonderfully together, it looks like this. It looks really like you want to read it every day. That, that's the USDA regulation that we have to follow when planning a menu. So all of our food items have to follow this regulation. So I would like, if you, you know, go ahead and read it. At the bottom there, there are, it says other specifications, daily amounts. These are what I term as a nutrient specifications. So for a weekly average, I have to create a menu that meets so many calorie ranges as well as a certain sodium range and a fat content range. And it cannot have any trans fat in it for our students. On that same line, because most of those are a grain product, they have to all be one hundred percent whole grain. So these are all things that I, I mean, it's a school regulation. We have to provide that to our students, and they have to meet that. Because if an auditor were to come out and they were not meeting those regulations, we would, we would get fined for that. So, and they do. Our manufacturers do the same thing as well.
So you got a question?
Yeah.
The menu option that you showed up there, is that an actual menu for the high school? What are your thoughts on, and of course, I don't know the setup or how it works, this question. Those whole foods that are going to eliminate a lot of the simple sugars that are in those things.
So, I get what you're saying. You're, you know, wanting that, like, nice, basic food, fresh kind of item. I love what you're thinking on that. And a lot of it has to play with, so when you're planning a menu, just so you know, we have to think of the regulations first. And then we also have to think of the food items that we can get in. And then, like, for the high school, she said she's doing the grab-and-go cart. So we have to think of how we can actually transport it safely, like the food safety of that item. How can you get it to those kiddos? So that's where it comes, a lot of it comes into play. How can we serve that item and keep it warm for them? And that goes across it.
So what you're, the menu we're just seeing is a summer menu. So it's much more limited from the participation, and it's a grab-and-go program in the summer. So if you see that menu, and let's say you get back in August, right, when we're off and running. We have a hot breakfast available, where we're doing eggs and turkey sausage and those type of things. But then also, for the students that, you know, are running in the door, these grab-and-go areas are available, right?
Yeah, this menu is basically a grab-and-go menu.
Exactly. And it was because with summer feeding, we're not required to serve like a protein. So it's only a grain, and it's free to everyone, so all of our summer feeding is. So we just basically follow the requirements and, you know.
It's a little different. And we're going to, we're actually going to be doing a little expansion on breakfast. Even in where we're already doing hot breakfast, we're going to be looking at adding a fresh fruit yogurt bar, where the kids, student can come in the cafeteria, build their own yogurt parfait. That's a compliant meal as well. So we're going to be focusing on adding that to start a school year. And so we encourage you to come and see when we start it back at school. And we have some new exciting things that talk in those areas that you're talking about right there.
That kind of ties in in the front of your binder, there is an invitation for you guys to come and eat. So when Paul said that, I'm like, that's perfect. So you can bring that into the middle school or high school anytime. The ladies will know, you get a free meal, you can have as much as you want, anything that you want, a minute breakfast, a minute lunch. Doesn't matter. So just come in and see what we are serving. So I think that's a good way to have it, too.
I eat there a lot. Yeah, at the middle school, because I'm there a lot. And I try to go at lunchtime, quite frankly, because the variety of foods that are served, and I was there for a long time. And I remember the days of the gross mystery meat and the not-so-fresh tuna sandwiches. Mr. Circo's laughing. Mr. Yarian, Dr. Yarian should be laughing too, he was there. But the amount of variety that they have, and on these breakfast bars, they're not the kind that you buy at the grocery store. And as long as the kids don't know that, they're fine with them. But if somebody says, because they don't look, they just eat.
It's all about.
And it's, if it says Cocoa Puffs on it, by George's Cocoa Puffs, and it might taste, well, this one tastes a little different than the one I have at home. Well, that's no big deal. But the variety of foods that are offered by Chartwells, and the willingness of them to tweak things for our particular tastes is really been great. And on a personal level, the ladies in the cafeteria at the middle school, if I find something I really like, I'd say, can I have the recipe for that? And they give it to me. And I've expanded my food choices a lot. But anybody, really go in and taste the food. It is not the kind of cafeteria, school cafeteria food that any of us had experienced. And if a child walks away hungry from a Chartwells offering, particularly at the middle school and high, there's something very wrong with them. Because they're used, and we have a culture of eating fast food. So the kids are dealing with tastes and textures that they haven't experienced before. But they get on to it. And the yogurt parfaits are wonderful, by the way.
Yes, one of our best sellers.
Yes, I understand Paul.
Okay, does anyone have any other questions that they'd like to address with us, too?
This is probably something you can't necessarily answer now, but are you anticipating changes in the, what you can offer with the new administration? Everybody's laughing.
So that's a, that's a great question. And we do sit and have an opportunity to talk to the USDA on a regular basis. Currently, there are no regulations. The only thing that we were hearing is that the, they're holding the sodium content where it is. So the sodium content was set last year to reduce again. And so they put a hold on that. And they've also extended, if you wanted a waiver for no whole grains, that you could do that. But we believe with the whole grains, we've come so long and so far with the whole grains over the last five years. And it's really the right thing in the kid's diet. Our manufacturers, our partners, and vendors have come so long on that. We don't want to take the step back on a whole grain, because we really think it's improving kids' performance in the classrooms, and it's sustainable energy versus, you know, a quick sugar rush and then dropping off. So we believe in staying with that. But, you know, as we learn new things, we always try to be out front with that. But currently, we don't see any changes in the horizon.
And if you have to buy your lunch, it's your best three dollars and twenty-five cent lunch in the country.
I think it's a steal on that side, too.
It's a steal. It is an absolute steal for the amount of food that they're, and the quality, and the quality of the food, so.
We are adding a new pizza oven to the middle school.
Cool.
So the kids should be able to see the pizzas come off. With that renovation, we're hoping to make it look and feel more like a high school environment, which will then prepare them for the choices and the flow of a high school cafeteria. So I'm really looking forward to that renovation at that middle school as well.
From the elementary school cafeteria to the middle school cafeteria, anybody that's ever worked there the first week of school sees these seventh graders with eyes about this big. And because basically in elementary school, they didn't have the choices that they have. And I think some education might be helpful for, at middle school registration from Chartwells, just to let the kids know the different kinds of choices that they have. Because they're all used to flocking to one line or maybe two. And when you have three hundred kids in the cafeteria, some of the lines back up. So I think if we could do a little bit better job, you know, this is what you're going to find on this line, this is, and take them kind of through that as a part of an orientation. And all of the kids are going to have their numbers. And in some elementary schools, the kids don't know their numbers. And I think that's important, that they make sure that they do at least initially know their numbers to keep the pace up.
Good information, good feedback. Will you come up with something? I think we can get a marketing flyer together, put it together, Rich, for Rich.
And last year, we did for orientation, we did like, we did menu samples at all the schools. So we had things out, kind of like the sampling that you and JD came to for the menu committee. And that's something at the middle school we'll do also. So if we have that set up, they're going to see how, where our lines are with the new renovation, and they can just stop by, and the parents can taste it, too, which was a big, you know, benefit of that, too.
Well, the programming of the keys is going to help us be able to focus on the foods that the kids really like. Additionally, we made some infight changes this year, second semester at the middle school. Just an informal survey, I sat down with some of the kids, and they really wanted some of the hot breakfast choices that they had at the elementary back. We added that. We did it one day a week, it was so popular. They then changed to two days a week.
We're going to do three next year.
The importance is to be responsive to what the kids want, that meets the guidelines, so that we are feeding them what they want to eat, and they get good nutritious meals when they're with us. They did, they did some dinner programs for after-school remediation. So we're trying to respond to the high needs of our community and make sure that our kiddos are taken care of.
It's a good committee to be on, they feed you. And the food is very good.
Well, thank you, guys.
Okay. Okay, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda submitted and amended.
Hi, Snowman.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Any patron comments on agenda items? We're going to go through the consent agenda, which is to vote on, which is the approval of minutes from the regular business meeting of five nine seventeen, and executive meeting of five nine seventeen. The personnel report, retirements, resignation, leaves of the absences, et cetera. Approval of May twenty seventeen claims, forty-six five twenty-eight through forty-six eight sixty-three. The approval of the Head Start Cost of Living Grant. The approval to apply for Title I funds. And a donation, a grant of seven hundred dollars from Whitewater Valley R E M C for Everton Elementary.
What was that for? What's that seven hundred dollar grant about?
Hello.
It's for the bookroom at the Everton Elementary School. It's for the expanding the resources of the bookroom at the Everton Elementary School.
Okay, I thought, okay.
And just to kind of let the board know, and I kind of forgot when we did that first vote, we're going to do a vote by hands from now on. It's just easier, because it's hard to hear sometimes if everybody's speaking. So I may mess up here and there while I'm switching over, but. So I'd like to entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Snowman.
Thank you, Mr. Beard, a second. Thank you, Mr. Yarian. I did want to, for discussion purposes, or I was going to ask if anybody had something they wanted to discuss, but I did want to ask Mr. Collins to explain just a little bit about the Title I funds, because I know we've seen some cuts.
Yes, Tricia's here, so she works very closely with that grant. And last, this past school year, we saw about a hundred thousand dollars in cuts in that federal grant. Right now, we're probably looking at eighty, eighty thousand. We don't know for sure yet, because we're just seeking permission to apply. But we are, we have been notified, we're going to see substantial cuts again in that program that is based on our poverty rates, and it's going to impact a lot of schools. So it's not good news at all from the federal side of funding the Title I. Tricia, is there anything else you wanted to add from what I shared?
We expect to get, find out our allocation within the next week or two. By June nineteenth, I think we're hoping to.
We're having to make, you know, try to plan ahead, and some through attrition with retirements, we're able to make some stopping cuts. But right now, we're getting to a point where it's going to impact the current programming if we keep losing money.
Any further questions or discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, on action items, the personnel report, recommendations for employment, Dr. Bear.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs, Mr. Collins, and members of the board. At your tables, there's an updated revised report for you tonight, a couple of additional items. This time of the year is a very busy time of the year for HR. And I want to give this opportunity to thank Mr. Circo, who always jumped right in and made a smooth transition here, and has handled a number of these persons that were providing with your consideration this evening. So with that, let's start with the certified staff. William Alston, mild intervention teacher, CMS. Stephen Beckman, English teacher, CHS. Mary Jo Clark, special ed, Everton. Caitlin Locke, elementary Fayette Central. Kelly McKeg, CHS math. Caitlin Moore, art teacher, Frazee at Everton. Sherry Pangorn, mild intervention, CHS. Abby Pankey, elementary teacher at Eastview. Mary Pitstick, mild intervention, Frazee. Darcy Powell, elementary teacher, Maplewood. Emily Reese, elementary teacher, Fayette Central. Heather Smith, elementary teacher at Maplewood. Stephen Stoner, science teacher, CMS. And Sadie Schaefer, music teacher, Eastview and Maplewood. In addition, then classified staff members on your report, Josh Bright, summer technology support. Kenneth Joe Hood, custodian at CHS. Tom Jurgensen is a deputy treasurer, FCSC, effective July five. Mike King, custodian, CHS. Braden Lyons, summer technology support. Alejandro Martinez, co-op intern. And continuing, Jennifer McCollum, social worker, August seventh start. Wendy Sargent, educational assistant, CHS. Doug Stevens, summer technology. And in the extracurricular section, Kyle Carce, eighth grade girls' basketball. Adam Dolphy, assistant band director, CHS. Trish Smith, JV volleyball coach. In addition, attached there, Tech May has all of these summer school and jumpstart recommendations, so those folks, of course, started. And the jumpstart will be in the last couple of weeks of July coming up. I won't go through all those names in the interest of time. Those persons for your consideration this evening, Mrs. Jacobs.
Thank you, Dr. Bear. Okay.
I just want to acknowledge.
Oh, yeah, jump on there.
We moved pretty aggressively this year on hiring folks. My philosophy is you try to get the best early, when you know you're going to have those positions. So I want to commend these two gentlemen and our building principals and directors. That's a lot of people, and we have some really high-quality people here, and I'm excited about getting as many people on board in June. So I think that's great for our district. So I wanted to commend these folks for really being aggressive. And we were able to get a math and English teacher, and I know that's good news for Mr. Judd, on board at CHS. So that leaves us, right now, just one special ed position at CMS. And then we're holding on a couple elementary until we get some better numbers. So we're in really good shape right now with staffing, so kudos to you guys.
It wasn't just knock on wood, you guys worked hard on that. I also just wanted to mention to the board, you'll see a little different format in the personnel report, a little more information that Mr. personnel report, a little more information that Mr. Collins thought would be, just continue some openness with the board and information that he felt we all should have.
I do appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Kudos to the cabinet, that was a mutual decision that we set.
Okay, great.
Just being more transparent, giving you all the information we can, so I think that's important.
There are, I feel old because I have a couple, one of my former students is on here, and I think it's so important to have people from, her family still lives in the community, and to have her back. And this was her desire very much to come back. And this was not the only position she was offered. And she chose to come up. Her alma mater, so to speak, tried to get her and they did not. So I think that that's just really.
We had one young lady who committed to us today who had multiple offers, and I don't know what all Mr. Circo told her, but she wants to come to Fayette County. That was really exciting. That was a big win for us, I feel. So, Mr. Judd, you guys did a good job of convincing her that this is a good place. It was easy.
You came a long time ago.
Yeah, many moons.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion for the personnel report.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Lori. A second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Chris. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bear. Board policy, Mr. Collins and Ms. Tullent, Tullent Tollitt, on the policy revision.
Well, I will turn this over to Janie, and she can share the second reading of this policy, if you would please.
Now, we had, you know, considerable discussion on it last month, but basically, in brief summary, it adds britches to our investment policy that we did not have. It addresses safety, security, risk associated with it, banks we are willing to use as a part of our authorization process. As you, it outlines some parameters. As you recall, we have moved our investments under the watchful eye of UML and Associates, their cash management division. That transfer of funds from Fifth Third to a trust account at Main Source is expected to occur on Friday. So this sets the guidelines that I and UML will use in our investment strategy. Where we are handcuffed, as we discussed, by some state regulations that do not allow for risky, higher return investments. You know, most of ours, you'll find, will be in the money market certificates of deposit of Fannie Mae or Freddie Mac securities we've owned over a period of time. So I'll be having to answer any questions if I might have.
Seems like everything was covered in here.
There's quite a bit, isn't there?
Very thorough, yes.
Yes, it went from one paragraph.
Right.
Investment policy to this with a lot of depth. And again, we share this annually as a part, when you, when you come together as board of finance, or whatever it's called, so you get another copy of this annually. And if you wish for any changes, you can make those recommendations at that time.
Gives us better guidelines and, you know, I think this is a big improvement.
Thorough, right.
Very thorough. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion for the revised investment policy, second reading.
Hi, Selma.
Thank you, Anne. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mark. All those in favor signify, oh, any discussion, further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, on to curriculum adoption, K through 12. Mr. Collins?
Thank you. The curriculum planning committee worked this year, this past school year, and is recommending approval of three courses. We shared this at last meeting, presenting these student ID for approval. The first is an elective physical education course, Lifetime Sports, recommended for grades 10 through 12. The second is a CCR Bridge Math Ready Program, and we are actually sending a teacher this summer to, I think, three days of training, Mr. Judd, to prepare for this. And this would be a class that a senior would take, and it would be one of those courses where a lot of times, kids go to college and they're not ready for the college math, and so there may be a remedial course. This is a course that will help bridge that. That's the intent, to help better prepare kids, especially those who aren't as strong in math, to help provide that. And there's some, there's some criteria for that with math I-Step performance and/or their PSAT scores. So that's listed there. And it will count as a mathematics course for general and Core 40 diplomas, and then as an elective course for the Core 40 with honors, either technical or academic. And then the other course is Math 10, which is a two semester course designed to reinforce and elevate the Algebra I and seventh and eighth grade geometry knowledge and skills. It's recommended for grades 10, 11, and 12. It's really for those kids who are really struggling with Algebra I because that is a hard class for a lot of kiddos. So this is another course. It's a two semester course, one credit per semester, and it will count for the general diploma only as one of our math classes, or it can be counted as an elective for the Core 40 and honors diplomas. So those are the three courses. There are no new textbooks being recommended for adoption. And then we are continuing to look at the science materials at K8 because with the science standards changing, some of the products out there are still in development. So we're taking a wait and see, just to see, really looking at hands-on opportunities for our younger kids because I think that's so important. So we're going to reevaluate that for the next school year. So I present those to you for approval, discussion.
I have a couple of questions. On the, the, the first math course you mentioned, the one for the seniors, okay. How many of these kids know before they enter senior year what college they're going to and if that college is going to require math? And since it's for kids that are having a little more difficulty, I don't want to assume what college they're going to, but maybe they're starting out at Ivy Tech or something like that, how, how will they know they need to take that class?
Well, it has a criteria with not passing I-Step.
Right, is it required?
It's a, Mr. Judd, I want to clarify on that.
I think a lot of it's going to be teacher recommendation.
Okay.
Counselor.
Teachers and counselors know how the kids did in their algebra class, how they did in geometry. The state a few years ago required kids who were going to get the Core 40 to take Algebra II. And what the state has found out, that a lot of kids cannot do very well at the levels expected for Algebra II, and therefore, when they go to college, they're having to pay for that remedial class, and they're not getting credit for it. So what the state is doing, saying, hey, we realize we have a segment of our students who are going to graduate, who are probably going to go to college, who may or may not really need Algebra II, but if we can get them a few more skills in this readiness course, then they may not have to take that college remediation course that's going to have to be paid for by the student and their parents, save them time and money, and that could go on. If you're going to major in English or history or something like that, needing that, that Algebra II and that passing score may not be as necessary as it would for someone going into a STEM field. So there's, there's a group of kids that with the new diploma requirements, it is really tough for them.
In general, both of these classes are more remedial anymore?
Yes.
Yes, remedial in nature, correct? Both these classes are remedial in nature? These math?
I wouldn't say so much as the, the Math 10 is definitely because we're trying to get those kids enough skills to pass the I-Step test. We're starting next year, the new ECA, the old ECA that's coming back. But that is definitely like the old Math Lab. We're trying to get them in to remediate, to go over skills that they missed somewhere so that they can pass the test. The other one is just an admittance that, hey, maybe not everyone needs that Algebra II.
Okay.
They need math, but maybe not Algebra II. Maybe they just need to brush up on their algebra and geometry.
And that's a title, that course sees the college career readiness bridge course in preparation for that. So it would, I would consider that a remedial course.
And just kind of playing a little bit of devil's advocate, so we know that we have some difficulty with our math scores at middle school and high school. And knowing that there's work being done to improve those scores, could there possibly be a time those classes aren't needed? In other words, do those help us right now with kids that aren't getting some of this? But our hope is that kids are going to get some of this, right? Like that, that, like the kids that aren't really getting algebra. Well, isn't our goal then, if they have to take algebra, we want them to be successful, right? So help me out here to see, and I don't have a problem with the courses. I think they're great. I'm just trying to figure out if this is something that eventually we may not need.
Well, I think eventually you have a segment of your population that probably will have a tough time getting that Core 40 diploma the way it is. And the state recognizes that, so we will probably always need those courses for a certain segment of kids.
Okay.
Right now, in scheduling, we do not have a lot of kids in the Math 10 for next year, and we have even fewer in the CCR class. I think right now, we only have 11 kids scheduled for that. They'll be identified more as soon as we get our test scores back.
Okay.
But right now, identifying them is very difficult.
But Randy, that class is purely elective, right? That senior class you're talking about to help bridge?
It will count for credit for their Core 40.
Right, but it's still up to them whether they want to take it or not.
Yeah, if they want to.
It could be more council recommended.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
The demand to take the quantitative reasoning class, and this is an option that covers that for the Core 40. So if they don't take this, they'll have to take something else for the quantitative reasoning component.
Okay, okay.
I think, I think when you look at the state, I don't want to belabor this, but when you look at the, what the state's trying to do with the different diploma tracks and options that they're going to be offering. Two, do all kids need Algebra II in the career fields they're going? I don't think they do. I, I just, I think that, this is a step, maybe I'm wrong, Randy, but I think this is a step for the state to try to broaden those opportunities because not all kids are going to go to Purdue and be an engineer. You know, we have a lot of career technical certifications and things that I think kids can be very successful in, and that's what we're seeing now. So I think it's just a change in that mindset, too.
And kids are not good in everything.
Right.
Yeah. And for one who prays to all known gods and goddesses to get through math classes, this would seem to be a good alternative because to tell, you know, tell a senior in high school they have to take calculus, you know, that's, that's, that's pretty tough, particularly if they're not wired that way.
Yeah. Some career programs have the quantitative reasoning component built in. My son, for example, who was in machine trades, that, that carries the crossover for the quantitative reasoning course. So some of them, you know, that's another option for some of the career. Not all of the career programs have that, but would need another math class.
Thank you for clarifying. No, that, no, no, that was all good information. I just was trying to be clear on why those were offered. Okay, good.
Thanks.
All right. I'd like to entertain a motion for the curriculum adoption.
Hi, Selma.
Thank you.
A second.
Thank you, Mark. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to the NWEA renewal, grades K through 12. Mr. Collins?
Thank you. I'm filling in for Ms. Curzaro today, so bear with me. I was very involved in this early, but we use NWEA currently in grades kindergarten first, nine, grades nine and 10. And we receive a formative assessment grant from the state, and we anticipate receiving that again this year that will cover the cost of this assessment. But NWA is, is a program, a testing program that's used throughout our country nationally norm. I'm a big fan of it, and I'm very excited. Our building principals and leadership team made a collaborative decision, talking with teachers to go across the district now with NWA. I think it will provide us some really good growth data, which is what I'm most interested in. What kind of growth does a student make from fall to spring? And then we can see how that compares nationally with all the kids who are competing for those $8 spots of jobs out there. So we will be hopefully using that with your approval. And the cost is about $11 per student for the testing license, and we anticipate that being refunded through the grant from the state as it has been done in years past. So I submit that to you for questions or for...
How many times a year are we going to give it?
We have a fall, winter, and spring.
Okay, so it's three times?
The fall and spring are required. The, the winter has, they treat it as an optional, but a lot of schools like to get that mid-year data just to look at how kids are progressing, set some new goals.
I am not a fan of standardized testing at all. I loved MWEA as a classroom teacher because it gave a lot of really, really good information about the students being in the school year. You knew, you knew the hand you were dealt as far as reading and comprehension and language arts skills and math. And we used it at the middle school at the time I was there, we used it as an incentive. We had goal sheets for all the kids that they filled out at the beginning, the first time they took the NWEA. And then we'd sit down and talk with them, okay, how much do you think you can improve your score? Can you do 10 points, try 20? And the look on those kids' faces, because it's instantaneous, they push the button, they get their score. And the kids were so, I got a 184 last time, look, I've got a 202. And it wasn't just another standardized test for them to take. You didn't get the burnout.
But it's not a standardized test.
It's, no, but it's, it's not.
Yeah, it's much better.
A much, much better test. And if we're going to spend the money, this, to my mind, is something that is so worth it. It is such a good tool, the, the tools that they have for the teachers to get in and dig into what the kids, the various areas that the kids are in need. The data that's supplied is very good, and it's very easily accessible and very easily understandable, so.
And they've improved it since you retired.
Yeah, yeah, I've given it, I've given it to students who have been absent, and it's, it's just such a good, it's such a good assessment for so many, many reasons. So it's worth the $11. It's worth probably triple that at this point in time. So I'm really glad to see that we're going back to doing it.
And to clarify, it does assess in reading, math, and language usage.
Language usage.
So it covers those three components, and the test should take about an hour each, and they are adaptive. So if, if a student who has a learning disability is taking that test, it will gear the questions as the student misses them or gets them right, and it adjusts with each student individually, which is a really nice feature. And then it looks at individual student growth. So if a student isn't performing at a grade level because of a learning disability or some struggles, it'll show what their expected growth is based on what their starting point. So not all kids are held to, here's your cut score, if I has to reach that. It measures growth for a school year, which is a really...
And there's no time, there's no time limit on it. So the, the child that, that needs the extra time to kind of, particularly the reading comprehension part of it, you built in a certain amount of time. But I think taking away that time constraint for a lot of kids, particularly those for whom school is a challenge, you know, I have to get this done in this period of time. You have all the time that you need to get this finished, and I think that, I think it makes the results much more reliable as far as where the child is.
I think the average time across the district in the four grades this past year was around 48 minutes per class.
But that child...
Some kids took an hour and a half, some kids took 30 minutes.
Yeah.
So it just depends on the taste that student processes and works. Anyway, I submit that to you.
All righty, I would like to entertain a motion for the NWEA renewal.
Hi, Selma.
Thank you. Oh, Lori for the first?
I'll second.
Second motion, Anne. Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll move on to the approval of the textbook rental fees for 2017-18. Mr. Collins?
Thank you. In your packets are the fees for each of our grade levels, kindergarten through sixth, and then also a summary piece. And then on the accompanying pages are the different costs that are spelled out. Some good news to our elementary parents, we are seeing an average decrease of a little over $10 per grade level, and we saw a decrease last year. So as we find other ways to use resources, you know, look at what we really need, our principals and teachers work with, with Kim and to really look at what fees, what we need. So that's good news. Middle school will see a slight increase in their overall fees for next year, and then the high school is very close to where they work, similar to last year. the high school is very close to where they work, similar to last year. So our fees have stayed pretty consistent or dropped.
How many of our students get textbook assistance, and is that going to be an issue this year?
Sixty-two percent.
Mid-sixty percentage.
Okay.
And so the state does not fully honor it?
No.
The balance ends up on the textbook, as a textbook, the balance of the textbook ends up on the debt service levy, and it continues to grow every year.
Okay.
It is. It's the way it is.
Yep. Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion for the approval of the textbook rental fees.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Chris. Second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Lori. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Churchill's contract renewal, Ms. Kellen Pollak.
Thank you, Mrs. Jacobs. This is the first renewal under our 1617 contract in accordance with the terms. They use some consumer price index, indexes to determine the amount of the increase. It is proposed at 2.1% for next year, which means the management fee will increase by $189 per month. And the administrative fee, which is based on meal count, increases from five cents to 5.1 cents per meal. The meal equivalent factor for à la carte remains at $3.10, and that remains consistent throughout the original contract and any of the subsequent renewals. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
And this renewal is for how long?
One year. We have to bring it back every year for reconsideration, and then you open it up for bid every five years?
Every five years.
Yeah.
Okay. Entertain a motion for the Churchill's contract renewal. My son moved. Thank you, Ann. Second.
I'll second it.
Thanks, Chris. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The municipal advisory services agreement with UMB, Ms. Kellen Pollak.
Thank you, Mrs. Jacobs. Um, we talked about this a little bit since budgeting last year, if you will, that we will be looking forward to a bond issue this year to try and keep our debt consistent. In the past, we have not used a municipal advisor to assist us in that process. But when you bring them in, you gain some advantages on the marketing of your bonds. So we would like to, to enter into an agreement with UMBon Associates for these municipal advisory services. Mr. Taylor from the Finance Committee set through their presentation, asked a lot of questions. Their proposed fee for this is $23,000. Once approved, we will begin the work on the bond issuance assessment and the process of issuing these bonds so that we will have a payment during the second half of next year and be able to keep our debt payments consistent.
Entertain a motion for the municipal advisory services agreement.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Lori. A second.
Second.
Thank you, Andy. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, the appointment of Kelly Flum to the Wellness Committee. Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Mr. President. With Steve Baer's retirement, how many more days, Steve?
I don't know.
He's working too hard. We do need to appoint someone to our East Central Indiana School Trust Wellness Committee, and Kelly Flum, who is a teacher at Maplewood, has been active in this process and a really great member. And so we, she's also working on administrative licensing, so it was a good leadership opportunity for her, and she very willingly agreed to step in and take over this function for Dr. Baer upon his retirement. She's already started and is doing a lot of great things. So if you know Kelly, you know this is right up her alley. So anyway, I submit that her appointment to this for your approval, consideration.
Thank you. And I'd like to ask for a motion.
Motion.
Thank you, Mark. A second.
I'll second it.
Thanks, Lori. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The credit card resolution, Ms. Kellen Pollak.
Thank you, Mrs. Jacobs. A year or so ago, we presented credit card resolutions for the corporation and for the career center that were approved by the board. They outlined the process for having and the safety and security of those credit cards. Well, we didn't know high school athletics had one and have had it for many, many years. So this resolution is to take care of that housekeeping number or housekeeping issue. And then we, I keep track of these in a notebook related to our internal controls that are available then for the state where the counts audit that outlines the board has approved credit cards. They've approved the policy related to those, and there's a clear expectation of the safety, security of those credit cards of the corporation.
And in the past, people, I mean, they didn't always use that credit card. So generally, they would have to, if they needed to run out and go get something in a store, they had to, didn't they have to?
We, we limited the use of the credit, the central office credit card to those of us who are authorized to have one by that resolution. I would suspect for athletics, Brent checks it out to Kerry Bronsel, he can pay the Pizza Hut bill when they stop for dinner. I mean, that might be an example of how it would be used. We do not check our credit cards out here for people to take with them. I have made travel arrangements for individuals, flights, hotels, those types of things. I'm just a little more control freakish than to just give somebody the credit card.
That's fine. That's fine. Yeah, yeah, that's good. Just putting it out there. Right, right. Thank you. We appreciate that. That's what we like about you.
Gee, Jay, you know. Sure, no one had any idea. I certainly, I certainly hope that contributes to my doing a good job.
It's a fiscal responsibility. It's steward of our dollars.
Yes, if we need to know where a penny is in the school corporation.
No, I can't tell you a penny. I'm going to waste my time on that.
For a dollar, you'll find.
I will.
And that's why we love you. Okay, can I have a motion for the credit card resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Lori. A second.
Second.
Thanks, Mark. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand or your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I'll get used to this at some point. Now's the opportunity for public comments. Persons wishing to make the board aware, suggestions, ideas, and or comments may address the board at this time. Comments which involve personnel or students must be discussed in private. Do we have any patron comments tonight? Seeing none, we will move on to report items.
None, Julie. Neither do I.
Superintendent's Discussion Group's reports.
Thank you. Leslie and I attended the Indiana School Board Association Law Seminar last Friday in Plainfield, and it was, it was very interesting. Ann was going to go, and she had another issue come up, but learned a lot. And I just want to highlight a lot of things operationally that affect us. I just want to keep you in the loop on it. And there, there are three different things I just want to briefly highlight. We, we perform expanded criminal history checks on our employees now. The employee pays for that, the potential employee pays for that as part of their application procedure when we're looking at them and we're ready to recommend. We run that prior to their employment. The state has enacted some changes with that in how school corporations operate. So it used to be you get hired in, you have that done, and then pretty much that's, that's it if you remain an employee in that school corporation. The state is now changing that to where every five years, every school employee will receive the expanded criminal history background check and the expanded child protection index check. Both of those will be provided or be done at hire and then every five years. So we have to develop a policy, and we'll work with our board attorney, as every other district in Indiana, to put into place a five-year plan where we perform these about 20% of our staff each year. So we're going to work on that and work with her to develop that. So we'll be presenting that to you by a later date. So it's a step, you know, to check because this is a much deeper inspection when it gets into DCS reports and different things with the expanded child index.
Is this to thwart these people that are, have issues in the school corporation and have been allowed to resign and then gone to another corporation without, without a background check? Is this, is this what, because somebody that's, my question is, if somebody, credit, I was here 32 years, and it's the kind of thing that if you have people that are living and are stable in the community, the background check is not going to, if it's, if there's a problem, it's going to show up in the Connersville News Examiner, pretty much. So I understand the need for this, but I also understand that the cost involved with this is going to be very, very high. And I can understand people who forum shop because parents will do that when their kids get into trouble, but for someone that's been stable in the community, I would see that it would be a bit of overkill, but I'm sure, I'm sure there's nothing we can do about it.
There is none. We, we have to comply with that. And I look at it as, yes, there's going to be a cost. We're going to have to figure out how that's going to be paid for, for current employees. So we're going to work on that. But the biggest piece is, it's another step to keep our kids safe. And it may be an inconvenience to folks, but it is a state requirement. And, you know, I think that the other piece that they mandated is you have to perform the background checks with reference calls with your current employer, your most recent employer. That wasn't mandated, but I will tell you, I'm amazed at the number of employees who leave us and we never get a call from the district they go to work in.
Wow.
That, that scares me. So we always make that a practice, and that is always going to be a practice. But now the state is mandating that as well because a lot of places do not do that. So these steps are going to be, yeah, we have to work through them, but for kids' safety, there are a lot of things, you know. So we'll, we'll communicate it with staff as we get our policy in place and make sure they're aware of why and the mandate with it. I just want to make you aware of that, and we talked about that at length. Another one is with collective bargaining. We have really great relationships that's been created with our teachers' association, but August 1st was the timeline when you could begin formal negotiations. That's been moved to September 15th now. So it's pushing that six weeks later. So I just wanted you to be aware of that, that that's going to be a change that we'll work with our teachers' association on. And then the third is the suicide awareness and prevention training policy that's been enacted beginning July 1st, 2018. Schools must provide training every three years to all employees who work with children in grades five through 12. So that's another policy that we'll be working through and be sharing that with you and submitting it to you for first and second read. But those are three changes that are impacting our school operations, and those, the two are especially looking at student safety and how can we better support and protect our kids. So, you know, I, I think anytime we can do that, it's going to be more work and certainly, but we need to do all we can to support our kids. So those are three things I wanted to highlight. Leslie may have a couple of things here that she...
Yeah, it was, it was a really interesting conference. I was worried I would, it would be over my head, and it really wasn't. I mean, there were, were at least, there was at least one speaker who was a bit dry, but we got through that, and then there was one guy...
It was on Fox News, too, by the way. It gets Janie, but...
Hopefully tomorrow won't be like that. Anyway, there were some really interesting discussions, and, you know, I just enjoy attending these opportunities that we have. One, you're with other board members, so you get to meet and talk to people. And two, things that I normally wouldn't be aware of, I mean, if this policy were already in place about the background checks or the suicide training, we might not know about it, except if we were revising a policy. And this way, it kind of lets you know what's important, what's on the horizon. And so I think I learned that with a number of discussions. You know, the one that wasn't so interesting was information on purchasing. I'm not really sure what the legalities behind purchasing and supplies, that kind of was not the, the hot topic, but...
It was interesting.
I think, I think that one of the best one was Pat Shoulders.
Yeah.
With discussing the state religious...
Separation.
Separation of church and state. Thank you, Mr. Government Man.
Oh, government.
Yeah. We learned an awful lot, which was very interesting about how much, yeah, how much can be done.
Pat Shoulders is one of the best out there, too. He's on the board for IU, but he's just a really engaging guy.
He was very engaging.
He's great, so.
And, and lots of examples, which were interesting. So anyway, I encourage you, if you have an opportunity to go to one, they are interesting. They really are. Any other?
No.
Okay. Principals, directors, reports. The only principal in the room. Director of Human Resources report to our directors.
Thank you. Mrs. Jacobs, Mr. Collins, members of the board. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank Julie Judd. Julie has done an excellent job with the summer program. She took that by the horns, and while she kept her cool all the way through when students come in the first couple of days, that's like starting a new school year with 200-some students, going to a different school they've never been in before, having a different teacher, going to different classrooms, and riding different buses. And so Katrina and she worked very, very well together. I oversaw a little bit of it, but Julie just really did a nice job handling all that. So Julie, congratulations on a great start and building experience there. So keep up the good work, and thanks for all your efforts in summer school.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Secondly, I appreciate the work of Churchill's and the opportunity I've had to work with them. It's been a great organization. I think it started with Ms. Jacobs, and I had a discussion about eight years ago back in one of the offices back there about looking at some needs for food service improvements. And I think that was a motivator for me to get started on that. And I was sitting, I was talking to Jason, some other folks back then, and all of a sudden, here we are. And the growth I've seen in people, especially Rachel stepping up in the leadership role. I remember when she was a little timid to speak when we were investigating what you do.
That's right, I remember that.
And sat back, you didn't know what to say, and now she's leading the PowerPoint presentation. So hats off to Churchill's. It's been a great ride, and keep up the good work, Rachel.
Thanks.
So just a couple of other comments. This is my last board meeting. Russ Hyd just took a chance on me 10 years ago, in fact, it was July of '07. And we had lunch the other day, and we kind of thanked each other for the opportunities, but I wouldn't be if it wasn't for Russ Hyd. He's an outstanding educator. He's just been a great boss, and I couldn't ask for a better opportunity than what Russ has provided for me. So I really appreciate all his work and his faith in me to, everyone would disappoint him. He was a man, he never would disappoint, and I hope that I lived up to what his expectations were. But, and as I talked to my dad, and he passed me about three years ago, we exchanged some pretty good thoughts and ideas, and we had one more opportunity to share that. And he asked me a question like, Steve, he said, what makes you successful, or how did you accomplish what you've done? And I said, well, I've always lived by the premise that if you surround yourself with good people, good things happen. And I've been so fortunate to be able to surround myself with good people in every aspect of it. I had 42 years of education. That starts with the board and trustees here. Warren might have been, well, my first year, I think, on his first career on him, he might have been the only one, and I'm not sure if you were.
I was here.
I thought you were. Yeah, I thought so.
Yeah, it was my privilege to be here.
Well, appreciate that. And, you know, you've got big hearts, and I look at that sign in the back, I've looked at it a couple of times, and I think in terms of children first, and you've got the biggest hearts because you, you always care about kids. And that's, if you have that, you've got everything in the world going for you. So I appreciate the work that you've done. I appreciate allowing us to retroactively prove some people that we were, time crunches to get them started. that we were time crunchers to get them started. I thanked you a couple of times during some of the 120-some board meetings I've attended over the past 10 years, and it's, I really appreciate the support and all that. So, the cabinet, original cabinet now we have now, and Mr. Collins, I've just got to know, and I really appreciate his work. He's reloading the organization. He doesn't have to be rebuilding. He's got some great skills with leadership. He's a visionary. He's a relationship builder, and that's going to serve him well all the way through, and so, Mr. Collins, keep up the great work. And I know you're going to take this corporation to even greater heights than where we've been, so great, great work. And Kim coming in new also with her ability to understand and work through instruction assessment has just been, I'll say, we've got a great leader there to support for that. Janie Kellon-Tollis is one of the, probably the most outstanding finance director I've ever worked with, and I've been through several, Bartholomew and Mitchell and others, and Janie knows everything about them, and she knows those pennies and nickels and dimes on, and she's put the corporation in great shape financially, so. And all the new people, Mike coming back on, and Katrina coming into food service, and our Stephanie and Kathy are our elementary principals, and just everybody's come aboard. I mean, we've got a great team here, and they're going to continue to do great things. So, I've been truly blessed to have served students and staff in the community here at Connersville. And it's really not about any individual, I think, but I always share this with administrators, it's the lives that we touch, the opportunity for that, and, you know, it's, you know, we can say we did this, we did that, but it's the lives. We make a difference in the lives of students, or teachers, or others. And I've been very fortunate to serve multiple people in good times and bad, in difficult situations where we've had to work through some cancer issues with some of our employees, and that's extremely difficult. It's very, very difficult. Or even more tough for me is releasing an employee. We've hired and brought aboard a good faith, and where we failed, you know, and we have to let them go. But I've seen the half of her family, Dan and Lauren, and they, I shared the other day when Lauren came in expecting her second child, and she said, "Well, you've been here for everything. You saw me through our first, our marriage. You hired us as teachers. You had the first child. Now you got the second child." I said, "Well, that's great, Lauren, because I'm not staying around to see the child graduate from grade."[1042.28][1042.28](Laughter). Enough of that. So, but she's a great gal.
We did ask for the child to be named Steve, though.
Yeah. Nice girl. Yeah, but all in all, hey, it's been a great ride, and I just want to thank all of you for your support. You've allowed me to be part of the Fayette County School family, so thank you very much, everyone.
Steve, I was here when we hired you, and I think one of the things that impressed me was that you not only became a part of the corporation, but you became a part of the community. And I appreciate that, and even more than that, you helped us get the right people on the bus, and that's an extremely important job. And I know Mike will take it serious as you did, and he'll, he'll give it his best, too, but we will miss you, Steve, so.
Thank you.
So, thanks for being here.
I've enjoyed it. Thank you very much.
Okay. Director of Finance report?
Thank you, Mrs. Jacobs. I just have three quick things. The first one is that your place is this evening. You should have a memo about the budget and the budget calendar. It is in a little bit different format this year, so I hope you like that change. Secondly, you authorized the corporation accepting proposals for a Head Start audit. Well, we received no proposals, and Mrs. Boggs left, but I wanted to thank her for her tenacious actions with the Head Start. We finally have from them where we are grandfathered, and our bi-annual audits from the stakeholder accounts will qualify, so we do not have to have and/or pay for these independent audits on an annual basis. We have that documentation in writing, and I've got it saved several places, so that we will be able to reproduce that should they have a change in staff. So, that's a huge relief for, for us to not have that added unnecessary expense to the Head Start program. And the third item, when I was growing up, we would go camping, and my dad had a philosophy that he instilled in all of us, that we always left that campsite better than the way we found it. And I'd like to thank Dr. Baer. You know, these are just a few of the things. He started the New Teacher Academy. He started our Wellness Committee. He started our Safety Committee. He started our Classified Staff Committee. All of these have left Fayette County Schools in a better place than he found it. And I can speak for myself that he is leaving me with being a better person for having been able to partner with him and to know him. So, thank you, Steve.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Janie. Assistant Superintendent's report? She's not here. Are you reporting for her?
Nope.
Okay.[1248.78][1248.78](Laughter).
I would never do that.
That didn't take me very long to say that.
Kim will be glad to hear that.
That's on record, too.
Superintendent's report?
Thanks. I, I sent you a couple of reminders, but I just want to put it out there for press, too. Our August 8th school board meeting at regular time is 6:30. We are moving that to 7:00 as we did last year. That's the night of our elementary open houses. Those typically last 5:30, 6:30 p.m., so give you time if you want to stop by a building or two, like we did last year. I just wanted to give you more advance notice this year. So, that will be a 7:00 p.m. start on August 8th with our regular monthly school board meeting. And then the other is, when we put out the calendar for the full year from January to December, we always include the following January. So, our January 2018 board meeting, I would like to move that from the 9th to the 16th. We get our packets and everything ready a week prior to, and our New Year's Eve, New Year's Day holidays will fall on that first part of the week. So, just wanted to make sure everyone's aware of that, and we'll also do that for 2019 with the January meeting, just because looking ahead, the holidays fall on those dates. So, want to make you aware of that, and that's for the press, too. Wanted to acknowledge Randy and Julie Judd, dynamic duo back there. They are our summer school administrators, and I will tell you, that first day, I, I get to Frazee, and I see Steve Baer out there with an umbrella out on Third Street directing people and waiting for the buses. And Julie had a line of people waiting to get to her, and everybody had something, and she handled it calmly. Katrina, our transportation director, hit the ground running, and Kim Crissaro and I were there. I mean, it was really a great start. And we've seen some numbers drop this year. Having a hard time getting our parents to get the kids. Some of our kids aren't showing up, so, but overall, I think it's going really well based on the reports I'm hearing, and I commend you both in your leadership for the good work taking place in our teachers, because they, they commit to doing that as well, and you give up summer. So, I appreciate our staff who's in there keeping things running, so kudos to them. Steve, you wouldn't be here if it wasn't for me, because I left.[1396.28][1396.28](Laughter).
I wouldn't have been here if Mike hadn't left, so.
But I, but I want to say, I agree with Janie. You, I look back to that lab that one year as I was doing finance and everything else, and Warren remembers that, and I was trying to keep my head above it, and I wasn't doing a good job, but I look at what you brought to the position. I told you that before. You, you elevated that, the Personnel Department, and I appreciate that as in this role now, and I know Mike will as well. Got three old HR guys sitting around the table here, but I do appreciate you. I, I put this in and had, you know, some thoughts to him, and they were personal, but Steve's truly one of the hardest-working, most dedicated people I've ever met. He's a workhorse. And you'll find too many people like that, dedicated to that mission, so thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
So, that's.
Any comments for the Good Other Clause tonight?
GED graduation is Thursday at 6:00 at the middle school, and for those of us that have had students that I, we didn't see go through high school graduation on Sunday past, it will be, I saw them going in there this evening, and I recognized some faces. So, although they weren't in the line in the hole, they will be there in the auditorium at the middle school. And I believe that starts at 6:00 on, on Thursday. And that's, it's always very, as a, as a former teacher, that's always very gratifying. It's always very sad to look at, to look for a face and not see it in that graduation line. But it's, it's equally as good to find that same face maybe a year or so down the road getting their, getting their GED, because these are people that, for whom school was not easy for a lot of reasons, and they really, the amount of effort it takes some of them to get there is just extraordinary, and I think that needs to be celebrated along with the, the people who do it in the more standard kind of way. And there were, just a personal aside, when I did a subbing stint a few years ago for Ann Stanwyck at the middle school, and she taught a class, it's called Orton-Gillingham Reading, and it's for students who basically find themselves in middle school and can't read. And I want to applaud Mr. Judd and everybody at CHS, because I knew all those kids well, and I was so proud to shake four, six hands. They got their, they got their diplomas, and I knew how hard they had had to have worked to have accomplished that. And I, it wouldn't be out without the resources of Holly Dunn and now Julie Phillips and the people at Connersville High School, because these were the most at-risk, at the ask risk. When you hit seventh grade or eighth grade and are reading at less than a third grade level, you, you've got a really tough road to hoe. So, it was just so gratifying, and these are not among the nine unemployed also. These kids had jobs, and so commendations to Connersville High School and what the staff is doing up there to take these very at-risk people and giving them all the opportunities they can to be successful. It's just, just really, really good to see. Very, very heartening to see these kids do so well. And I see one more I know that's going to get a GED. Saw it there today, so just really cool. I think why all of us who ever taught, why we do what we do, why we did what we did. Really cool.
Any others? I just wanted to take a time, the time, first of all, to welcome Mike to the table.
Thank you.
It's good to see you. I don't know where you would have sat if Kim was here, but. We're glad she's not, so you have a seat.
He took his seat. He has fun in his life.
And Steve, I just, you know, I want to ditto what these folks said. I was glad to hear Warren comment about your role in the community, because I think that a lot of times we have a community that feels that we should really just be having local people in all of our positions. And of course, we all know that's not possible to, to do. However, you really took that to heart, and you have been so involved in the community, and I've, I've seen you lots of places, and talk about hardworking. You know, I thought I was fit when I first sat on the board, and then I heard that you were getting up at 5:00 in the morning and running every day, or 4:00 in the morning?
3:30.
3:30. Yeah, like crazy times, and, and, you know, you just went way up there in my book. It's like, I'll, I'll never be able to do that, so I wish you well in wherever you go, and thank you for all your leadership over the time that you've been here.
It's been my pleasure, sir. As always.
Enjoy your retirement.
I will.
Actually retire.
I'll have to get some advice from you.
No, don't. Don't get it from me. I didn't do it, but pursue your avocations as opposed to, Serkis has no room to talk.
Okay, with that meeting, do I have to ask for a motion?
Yes.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Second.
Did you say first? Okay. Warren and Mark. Thank you. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.